Order. Do the pledge of allegiance. I'll let Dustin Carl give you some map.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the people of Washington, to the citizens of this land. One hundred and eighty under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Dustin, do the roll call.
Justin?
Here.
Jamie? Jack? Jessica?
Griffin.
Matt?
Here.
Shy.
Here.
Next item is approval minutes, August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
We accept the minutes as ready.
Dustin, next motion.
I'll second.
Just consistent.
Justin?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Shy?
Yes.
Next item is open hearing for any public comment. Does anybody have anything to say? I have anything to say, I will close the comment. Next item is new business. Uh, we got Jeff with ESI. He's gonna present the uh, water plan. Jeff, I'll let you take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I'm pleased to present to you this evening uh, some details of projects that we've been working on for the city. Mayor's asked us to take a look at some things and pleased to give you an update this evening. What I'm presenting this evening is some information on water project that we're working on for the city. And, and this is a multi-phase project that we're looking at. Uh, it's gonna involve booster pumping upgrades, some water main upgrades, and some storage upgrades. Why, why do we have a need for a project like this? Uh, basically, I, I don't think anybody on this council is surprised to hear this, but there's a tremendous amount of growth going on in the area. Uh, Hyphen is no exception to that. Guys are rapidly growing. And, and because of that, there've been uh, some pressures placed on your water system. And we also want to make sure that you're well positioned to handle the growth into the future. And so, these projects uh, that we're proposing tonight help to put you in that right place to continue growing into the future and to also meet the needs that are currently being placed upon the system. So, taking a step back and talking about the project a little bit in detail. I mentioned some pumping grade, uh, pumping upgrades. We'd be proposing a new booster pump station uh, to help push the water that you're receiving from two ton into your distribution system. Uh, we'd be proposing a total of about nine and a half to ten miles of water main extensions. Uh, ranging in size from eight inch on the small side, or rather, eight inch on the small side and eighteen inch on the large sides. Extending a major trunk line into the heart of the system. And it also includes storage capacity upgrades up to uh, uh, up to two million gallons total. You right now have a half a million gallons of storage. We're proposing a new one and a half million gallon elevated storage tank. Looking at the costs, uh, I'm sure that is the first thing most people want to hear. Uh, again, I, I mentioned a multi-phase approach. First phase would be booster pump upgrades. That would also include some electrical upgrades to support the larger pumps. Right now, your existing booster pump station is on Tilly Willie Road and it's uh, powered by single-phase power. Three-phase power would be needed to support larger pumps. So, the first phase would include three-phase power upgrades through Carol Electric and a new booster pump station there alongside your existing booster pump station. Uh, that project, we project costs to be uh, approximately one point six million dollars. Uh, the second phase of the project, which would be eighteen inch mains and the elevated storage tank and an eight inch main uh, that runs down Gaily Hall Road uh, would, would bring the overall project price up to twenty-two point one million. The eighteen inch mains and the storage tank by themselves, seventeen point two million and an eight inch line down Gaily Hollow Road, another three point two million. Now that I've kind of given you some brief details, you know, I know there's probably gonna be some questions. I'll save some time for questions uh, at the end, but I'm sure you wanna know, well, how are we gonna pay for this? Twenty, twenty-two million dollars? You know, it's a lot of money. How's Hyphen gonna pay for this? You know, the first phase of the project, the booster pump upgrades, it's really critical that we bring that online quickly. Uh, it meets, that, that project will help you to meet the immediate demand that's being placed on the system by the development that's already going on here in Hyphen. So, for that project, we believe that it's the right thing for the city to do to, to uh, go after some private funding to help finance that project. Go out into the open bond market, get a little bit of money to speed that to completion. It, it, since that project is so critical to getting you to meet the current demands, we think private funds are the way to go. And just to give you some ballpark information on what you might find in the private market, we've been reaching out, talking to some financing folks who are offering loan terms of twenty to thirty years. And right now, you're seeing with good credit, uh, thirty-year term, five percent on the interest rate. So, pretty attractive rates. And the more, the more uh, financing folks we bring into play for competition, I think uh, the more competitive that interest rate could be. The larger bulk of that twenty-two million though, comes in upgrades that are really helping to support the long-term growth of Hyphen. There's not as such an immediate need for the project as it is, hey, we need to plan for where we see Hyphen growing five years, ten years, twenty years from now. And the, the second half of the second phase of the project supports that growth. Because you need a lot more capital. It's a lot bigger project. And you can, you can get longer loan terms through public financing, more attractive interest rates. And you get some other protections uh, as well. We are proposing that the second phases of the project be funded uh, through, through public means. Um, there's a couple of ways you can go about doing that. Um, USDA Rural Development offers a water and sewer loan program where they provide loans with up to forty-year terms, currently offering four percent interest on that. Um, and the, the great thing about getting a loan through USDA, you know, it's a federal loan. It provides protection to you on your system. Uh, when they, when the federal government underwrites a loan using your customers as a source of revenue, no one can come in and take them away from you. No one could come in and, you know, remove a portion of your customer base in one mechanism or another uh, because the federal government is counting on those customers to repay the debt. So, that is a real advantage uh, to Hyphen uh, to go through USDA. The other way, you could fund a project publicly is through the Arkansas Natural Resources Commission. They also offer loans with extended terms, not quite as long as USDA, only thirty years instead of forty. Um, and based on the term of the loan, they're offering different rates with uh, thirty-year loan being four and a half percent all the way down to a ten-year loan being three and a half percent. In, in your case, for this large of a loan, we'd, we'd, we'd be looking at the longer loan terms, either thirty from ANRC or forty from USDA. The, the differences between going USDA or ANRC, if you got a loan from ANRC, it wouldn't offer the same protections of your system revenues than USDA would offer. Uh, there, there is some small chance that ANRC funding would include what they call principal forgiveness, which is essentially a grant. And USDA will not be offering that to you. It'll be a loan only. But in our opinion, the benefit of that, that system protection is so great that uh, we, we feel it'd be a, a much better option to go through USDA. Just wanted to kind of give you some, some alternatives to consider though. Just to, just to sort of rehash where we've been, little brief description of the project, why we need it, how much it's gonna cost, where could we, where could we get the funding? Uh, you might also be asking, well, how, how long is this project gonna take? Um, for the first phase, again, we want to speed this to completion as quickly as we can. We're looking at, you know, about six months of design time on the booster pump station. Three to five months of regulatory approval. And then about a fourteen-month construction period, most of which is gonna be sitting around waiting on the equipment to arrive. The pumps and the generator have a little bit of a long lead time. So, if you think about that all together, you're, you know, if you, if you give me authorization today to move forward on the first phase, we're about two years away from completion on the project uh, like that. The, the larger second phases of the project, one of the drawbacks to private, uh, public funding is the funding application process can be challenging and lengthy. And so, these projects would include about twelve to eighteen months of funding phase where we're actively going out to get the money from either the state or the federal government. Uh, then we have about a six-month design time, about three to six months regulatory approval. And for the uh, for the contract that has the eighteen-inch line and the tank, about thirty months of construction. Uh, for the eight-inch line that runs down Gaily Hollow Road, about nine months of construction. So, for those second larger phases, that's, you know, setting you up for the long-term growth in the city. It's a, it's about a four to five-year project horizon, you know, from authorization to proceed until construction is complete. About forty-five years uh, would be, you know, from starting to work on the funding until we anticipate construction to be completed. I brought a couple of exhibits with me. I know it's probably difficult to see from where you're sitting, but I'm gonna leave those so that you all can inspect them uh, more closely uh, at your free time. Um, I think there's also a digital copy on the screen there, but uh, in, in general, again, I'm gonna step over here. I'll speak loud. Booster pumping upgrades here, Tilly Willie Road. Uh, three-phase power that runs to the south uh, to support that. And then the second phase, we'd be, we'd be running eighteen-inch mains into the heart of the system and a new one and a half million gallon elevated storage tank. Your existing tank sits up here uh, a couple of miles to the north. And then the final portion of the work would be extending an eight-inch main down Gaily Hollow Road. Now, that's an area where you're not currently serving water. So, that part, portion of the project gives you some opportunity to grow revenues in your system too. It's not just, you know, supporting the growth in the main areas where you're seeing it now, but you're planning for growth in an area where we think there's a high potential for some additional customers.
Gaily Hollow Road has a three-inch line a mile or so down it, which it doesn't. I mean, that really don't supply anybody with any water. We've had, I mean, Dustin gets phone calls all the time, at least once a week. Now, people wanting water down Gaily Hollow Road and there, and there was one person that called and was begging for water. They said they've been hauling water to their house because their drinking water isn't good. You know, so there's, like Jeff said, there's, we'll pick up a lot of customers down that. It's just not going to, you know, an area that does not have a lot of customers. If you guys know Gaily Hollow Road, there's, there's a lot of growth going on down that road that we were, we were available to capture a lot of customers on. Uh, on the first phase of that, uh, what Jeff was talking about, the three-phase wire and the, the three-phase electric, we've already paid Carol Electric five hundred dollars to do their study. And Jeff and them are, he estimates it would be two hundred fifty thousand dollars for three phases. So, when Carol Electric will give us their actual price, uh, and then when that comes in, we have the source to go ahead and pay for that. Cause for Carol Electric, just like on the Power Republic, it took them six months, I think, just to move that pole, but you had, we had to pay them five thousand dollars upfront. So, for Carol Electric to even put that project on their radar, we had to pay that money upfront. So, that generator that Dustin asked you guys to order two or three months ago, this, this project, we seen the need for this project. We canceled that. They allowed us to cancel that order. There's another customer needed that generator. So, we didn't pay that money out. So, that was a hundred and sixty, over a hundred and sixty thousand dollars that will go towards that project. And we still got money in Dustin's savings account that you guys put uh, you guys are allowing all the, all the uh, connection fees to go in that savings account to help pay for projects like this. So, that money will come out of that savings account. So, when that's done, so whenever we get the, the cost from Carol Electric is when I'll come back to the council, ask for them funds, so we can go ahead and get it put on Carol Electric's radar. Or it'll probably take them eight to nine months or more just to do the project.
So, um, ladies and gentlemen of the council, what I'm, what I would ask tonight is for your authorization to move forward on one or both of these phases of the project. I think it's most critical that we absolutely get started on the first phase of the, of the improvements, which is the booster pump station and the three-phase power upgrades needed to support it. That way, you can push water from two-ton into your system more effectively. But if, if you are so inclined, I would also love to have authorization on the, the larger, longer-term portion of the project as well. And we would begin immediately work on, on the funding application for that. Uh, I know I threw a lot of stuff at you. I don't know how well you've been briefed on any of this. So, I'm happy to take questions on any and all portions of what I just said, you know, questions on what the project is, why it's needed, how much it costs, where we're gonna get the money, how long it's gonna take, anything you have. I'm here to answer your questions. Thank you.
Jeff, I've got some questions.
Okay.
So, on the first phase of the project, you made a statement earlier that it would cover our current growth if we get to the first phase of one. So, if I, I think of that as we have fifteen hundred residents, we've approved, uh, perhaps fourteen more houses. So, let's take that up to maybe three thousand residents. That's what the current five hundred thousand gallon, or five hundred million gallon tank plus these improvements will cover. Is that the way to think of that?
Right. So, you have a half a million gallons in storage right now and you have a small booster pump station that takes water from two tons transmission line and it helps you to fill that tank. And then the tank is what pressurizes and feeds the rest of your customers. And yes, there's a lot of development that's on the books, you know, dirt's being turned, but there's not really houses on the ground yet. Those people are coming. And this first phase helps to support, you know, the development that's already going on in Hyphen.
Okay. Could you give us maybe like a number? So, like as council, as we're looking at planning, commissions, developing land and figuring things out, like at some point, it sounds to me like you're saying this isn't gonna handle X amount until we get to three to five years from now, we have this other system. And we need to be very aware of how far we can progress with our existing system to, before we can get to the next system. And maybe, maybe you've got that answer.
Yeah, if, if I could just insert, so our, our booster pump station, we upgraded those pumps at twenty-two. We upgraded because we essentially had, we had no other choice. The, the old pumps, it was gonna cost us more money to rebuild the old pumps than to just slap in bigger pumps. We're at the point now in peak demand, especially in the summertime, where those pumps are running eighteen to twenty hours a day to keep up with the So, the, the need for the bigger booster pump station is, is shown mainly in the summertime. But I, I don't think we can handle another couple of summers with peak demand as it is and with the equipment that we have.
Understood. So, you, you know, you think about what Dustin just said, if, if your pumps are running eighteen hours a day, you know, you could probably support up to a thirty percent increase in your current usage. And at that point, your pumps are gonna be running non-stop and that's really not a space you wanna get into. So, you know, thirty percent maybe a little bit on the optimistic side uh, before you, you're gonna be in situation where you absolutely need some improvements. So, we wanna get out in front of that uh, with this first phase of the project.
Perfect. I think what I'm looking for is sort of a, a number that we all can have in our heads as, as leadership here in, in both the planning commission and ours to say current system with the pumps running at a hundred percent, whatever, we're, we're capped at this many more houses or residents.
So, you want, like that metric that you want to see is like housing units or?
Something to that effect so that we know that we're not, we're not overburdening our system before we can actually handle it. It sounds like we're already at a point, maybe a little bit there, but you know, it sounds like we have a little bit of room left. Tell us what that is so that we don't go approve a two thousand something house neighborhood in the next twelve months. They'll start building in the next eighteen months. But if you're telling me we can't be there until three to five years from now, like we need to have that work in our head.
Yeah. So, so this first phase, I think we're uh, you know, we're two, maybe two years out. When you think about, you know, design.
That's what I was thinking away from going, sorry. About two years we get this first phase. That's just for our current growth, you said.
Yes.
So, that concerns me when we think about more improvements and more neighborhoods.
Right. I, I will tell you, unfortunately, I do not have the numbers with me tonight uh, to give you that evaluation metric that you want, but I can get it for you. And I'll, I'll get it to Dustin. I'll get it to mayor and you can share that.
And all my questions aren't meant to suggest we don't need to do all this. It's just about how, how we help guide ourselves towards the right strategic growth plan and what we're doing. It sounds like we need to do both these projects and that's not my question, how we fund them. You gave a lot of great examples of how we can figure that out. All the above my head, my paper read. We'll, we all gotta figure it out together.
Justin, the uh, to answer your question, you know, just like our sir, we had, when I come in office, we started having ten ESI work on our, our sewer capacity of how much sewer we could take versus how many houses could come in here. So, they got that done. That's the reason we went to Little Rock and spoke with uh, the health department down there to make sure that we're both on the same page. Then I've had them, they started working on a water system to see where we're at. You know, so when a subdivision does come in, we can call you aside and say, hey, we got this amount of subdivision. What do you think? Can we handle it or can we not handle it? Okay. And then they'll say, Ryan, now you, you have to do all these upgrades in order to handle it. We tell the developer, hey, you have to do this or, you know, order for you to build it, right? And otherwise, you can't build it. You know, so we're, we're already, we're already in the process of doing all that. It's just for them to, to go through, all this stuff takes a lot of time. See, I'll, uh, at council, I would say this takes a lot of time to draw all this up, do all the numbers and figures and stuff, but yeah, we're uh, we don't, we don't have a number. We do have a number on sewer. They, they broke that down for me. Uh, so you know how many houses can actually be on the sewer system. That, 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 that way we know when a subdivision comes in, we're good. Just like on the DR board, we were good on that. But, you know, we keep, we keep track of all that as more subdivision. We'll tell DA or that, we're not good or we are good.
Perfect. We'll, we'll definitely get you that number. One, one thing that I didn't really highlight at all, um, it's just kind of a small detail, but something you said, the mayor sort of triggers the thought in my head. As a part of this overall project, one of the things that you'll be receiving is a deliverable at the end of the job is a model of your water distribution system, something that you don't have currently. We'll be using computer software to, you know, model the behavior of your water system. And it helps, uh, it will help us and help you moving forward with designs of infrastructure upgrades. But it can also help you evaluate, hey, here's a developer coming in. They wanna put a big development in in this portion of the city. What is the impact to it on our water system? Well, we can, once the model is developed, you know, we can help you with this. Or even if you chose to go with some other engineer, you would have the model yourself that you could use for planning purposes down the road and sort of do some what-if analyses and, and help you and help your planning commission make smart decisions on how the city grows in the future. Yeah, but who is it?
Ryan.
Ryan, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had a question on uh, funding. I always hate debt, I guess, uh, for city and big amounts of debt. I'm just curious, when developers come in, like they're wanting to do in Hyphen, is there possibilities to require them to fund some of this uh, uh, that we're gonna be needing water to the houses they're building, building to make you money off of? That we can require them to uh, fund some of these projects? I don't know. Just kinda curious, cause they fund some of the roads and things. Is, is that possible for water as well?
Yeah, I already touched, I just touched on that, Ryan. That's.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I missed it. So.
When we made the, that's the reason we made the model for the sewer, making a model for the water. I mean, you know, it's, it's just like, well, the big development we're going, going on at the DR board. Jeff and his team is working on that to see how much of the impact that's gonna make on our system. And if whatever their development calls for, and if it requires upgrades, then they're gonna pay for that. Their portion of, whether that's a twenty percent, ten percent, we don't know what that is until everything, all the calculations are done, the models are done on that. So, yes, that's, to answer your question, Ryan, the developers are going to start helping with some of these upgrades on this.
Would it be that they would pay a hundred percent of like this twenty million dollar bill, whatever timing, could that whole twenty million be paid by developers? Or are we saying that they would, they'd be paying a portion of it?
They'd pay a portion of it. What, what their development cost. You, you can't make the developer pay for the whole city. You can only make them pay for what is developed.
Understood. That's a great question though.
Yeah.
Definitely something that the city wants to be used to their advantage, you know, as, as you grow.
And there's, and you know, we're not going, you know, Springville just passed the other day uh, of making some impact fees and stuff, raising their, their uh, uh, cap fees and stuff to help pay for some of the projects, you know. You know, all the, I mean, all the cities, if you've been reading the paper here the last month, I mean, every day it's something about another city passing an impact fee or something like that, because there's cities, this area as a whole is just growing so fast. And you know, just an article the other day, Benville claimed on a three percent growth rate, they, they're, you know, they need to be planning on a six percent growth rate. You know, they already had the backup and, and readjust all their growth rate. So, uh, it's just, I mean, we're just, I'm reading, I'm trying to stay ahead of the curve. You know, there, as far as our city goes, I can see a need for the water, the sewer stuff and, and like Jeff said, this stuff isn't gonna happen overnight. I mean, it's gonna be a process. We already, you know, I've already informed you guys a while back that we already started the process for the USDA loan. Cause I seen this was coming. Uh, so we're already a step ahead there. Now, and if you guys give approval to Jeff and his team tonight to go, go ahead with all three phases, I mean, all you're doing is approving him to start the process of anytime, you know, a loan uh, before any money can be spent, I mean, it has to be approved by the council, you know. So, as the process goes, he'll be coming back multiple times informing the council of, of where we're at, what the cost is. You know, loan, stuff like that. You guys will have to make multiple improvements throughout this process. So, this isn't just a, hey, I give you the, the keys right now and then I don't ever see you again until the project's done.
Right, right. It's, it's not a blank check. Uh, even, you know, the federal funding, the state funding, we can go through the application process. Ultimately, they'll uh, make an offer of funding to you term, a long term and interest rate and so forth. You're not committed to anything at that point. You can easily just decline the offer.
And this is gonna be six to eight months for the health department to even approve these water plans. So, they, the sooner we can have PSI start working on this stuff, the sooner we get it down to the health departments and just, we just start the process.
So, I, I thought you were gonna ask something different. Is this, I guess my question is from the other side, like you said, I mean, the growth is exponentially or this is only fighting for the growth that we know on paper right now?
Well, so the first, I would say the first phase is really what's gonna put you in position to meet the demands of the growth that's going on right now. The second larger phase, extending an eighteen-inch trunk line into the heart of the system, quadrupling your water storage, that's gonna set you up for, you know, longer-term growth beyond what's already currently going on. Qu- quadrupling your water storage, that's going to set you up for, you know, longer term growth beyond what's already currently going on.
Okay, so that would have her, or in theory, would be able to support. Anything that we may have in plans for five years plus plus a buffer on top of that?
Ideally, you know. I will tell you, it's a, it's a real challenge projecting growth in Northwest Arkansas, especially right now, especially for a city like Hyphol. Who for so long has been relatively small. But now is undergrowing a tremendous growth curve, it's it's hard to project. Is that gonna continue in a linear fashion, is it an exponential growth curve? You know, and what what factor exponential growth curve, uh it's hard to predict, but. Generally speaking, you, we look at designing these types of infrastructure improvements for a twenty year horizon. Now, I'm not standing here telling you that you do this project and you're good for twenty years, because there's a chance that Hyphol grows much more rapidly. Than we would have predicted, so. That that's what we look at, though, when we design infrastructure like, you know, a million and a half gallon storage tank, that's a significant piece of infrastructure. You don't want to design it to where it's, you know, obsolete in a couple of years, you you want it to be. You know, have a long lifespan, so that's our goal, but again, just sort of cautioning everybody, it's really challenging to predict. The growth dynamics right now.
So phase one supports what we have on paper, phase two will support some some level of.
I'd say medium to long term growth.
And then my other question is, I don't know how how this works, logistically, it sounds like phase two is just from current population we have. A little bit more urgent, we have people there that are falling water, is there a way to start on that project in tandem so that?
I I, so I would hope that uh that I get authorization to move forward on all phases of the project now, and and. We can start immediately on on the whole project. The the booster station, I think, is the most urgent need, it's going to help you to fill your existing tank more efficiently. Uh you don't want to get a couple of years down the road where you have a real hot summer. Demand is really high, people are watering ponds, you know, uh. You don't want to get to a point where you can't fill your tank, where your pumps can't keep up with the demand in the system. That's that's when you have to get into things like conservation orders and, you know, maybe slowing the growth, and that's those things we want to try to avoid.
Correct, there's not a way to do them at the same time?
No, I would say, I would say yes, but I think we want to split them in terms of how we fund them. Because the private funding is going to allow that first phase to get to completion more quickly. We won't have the year to a year and a half of funding procurement on front. Got it, it shapes all that.
Thank you, one final question, so if I think about a one and a half million dollar, million gallon tank, is that Gentry, is that Springdale, is that Bentonville, like, what's that kind of support?
So let me, let me uh uh offer this comparison, um we do a lot of work for Centertown. That's one of your close neighbors to the north, may have seen some of their tanks, we're currently in the process of building a tank on Highway one oh two. Uh kind of before it makes the bend and turns to the east, they have a fire station there. We're building a new tank there, it's two and a half million gallons. Uh they have another one on Highway seventy-two, uh that's three million gallons, so we'd be, we'd be looking at half of their largest tank, not not. A little bit larger than half of their smaller tank, so. Um, when when you think of like a, a rule of thumb with your storage. Is you really want to position yourself so that you can store and maintain at least a year, uh at least a day's worth of usage in your tanks. If there's some sort of uh calamity and you can't get water from two ton for some short period of time. You'll have some buffer in your in your own system, and really the state mandates that have storage like that, now we're. You know, uh suggesting that you build more than that so that you can support the growth. And that, you know, medium to long range growth, you still have the ability to maintain the day in the air.
Okay. I'll look for a number of like how many residents that supports, I think that's what my brain's just starting to.
Yeah, I understand, sorry, I don't have it.
So is this a a motion, there's not like a resolution on the table, so I don't really know.
No, it's just a, just need a motion to allow him to to move forward with all three pages.
Right, yeah. And as you started to go, moving forward three pages means doing the work, but every time there's a check to be paid, he comes back to this this council, you know, so it authorizes the checking.
So for for us moving forward on the first phase, you know, we would. We'd submit a proposal, you know, to do the work on the first phase and immediately get started on the design work, detailed design work. So that we could submit for regulatory approval, uh and and put it out to bid as quickly as we can. Uh, the second phase, you know, authorization to move forward means for us getting started on the funding application. Um. You know, the the way our fees are are often structured. The first phase, you know, we'd want that proposal in place so that we have a contract to go to work for you and feel comfortable that, you know, we'd be getting paid to do the work. Uh the second phase, where we go out to get the public money, the public financing covers engineering fees, so. You know, we're, in theory, what what we do there is we defer our billing, we we work. Under the promise that we're going to eventually get the money and get paid, uh so.
The other thing with the first phase is that you might, if if Carol Edgus back to us by next month, is I'll be coming back saying, hey. Here's the money that we need to prove to go forward for three phases, and here's where we're taking that money out of.
Okay. I'll make motion to involve three phases and begin the work on our water system.
Dustin makes motion.
Justin?
Yes.
Jessica, yes, Matt?
Yes.
Guys?
Yes.
Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for your questions. Next item on agenda is resolution number two four dash two zero two. City of Hyphol, Benton County, Arkansas, City of Hyphol, uh two thousand and twenty-five millage resolution. This is the same village that we have each and every year, it's been that way for twenty years that I know of, so. We're not increasing or anything like it, we just have to prove this each and every year.
Do you need a motion to suspend my reading?
No, it's just a resolution. I just need a, a motion, question to pass.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Justin makes motion. One second. Matt says.
Justin?
Yes.
Jessica, yes, Matt?
Yes.
Shai?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is resolution two five dash two zero two four. Here, should we hear my candidates before we do this resolution? Uh no. How many of them is there? All right, well. We probably need to table this, I like to listen to. Is any, any on my line? What's, what's her? And Gina? Good, well, if they're not here, we'll just table it, are we good to table, the park commission can still produce new business, right?
Uh after the ball festival, so we're we're good for twenty two next week.
Yeah, well, just, I just need a motion to table this right by next meeting, I'd like a motion to table, Matt makes motion.
I'll second.
Just so.
Justin?
Yes.
Jessica, yes, Matt?
Yes.
Shai?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is going to be resolution two five dash two zero two four. This is. Uh City of Hyphol, Arkansas, resolution authorized in execution of a lease agreement for the copier. So this, ours other lease agreement expired, Tiffany, you can appear, I think she uh. She does some stuff and actually got it cheap.
So our current copier machine had this folding capability that we just don't use, that was a a huge expense, we got rid of that. And um instead of having the two extra doors, we're going to do a cabinet for storage under there, and we'll just refill the printer as well, we don't use as much, so it won't be that problem. Um, but it's going to be a five-year lease instead of the current, we're under a two-year. So, and our maintenance days can be cheaper than it was before, so that's good.
Well, the department head she went over with, and they're all good with it and stuff, so everybody that works in offices is good with the the changes.
And we're going to have faxing ability again.
Thanks, there's council getting questions for Tiffany.
What were we going?
Uh, you know, let me go down to our financials. I mean, I could look at it myself, I guess.
We're outside enough a lot, but it's safe.
Inflation, we're saying something that's impressive.
It's all right, Tiffany, I'll look, I'll look for my.
It's anywhere to two to three hundred dollars, and this is going to be around a hundred and fifty, so.
Council, is there anything else, I just, no, we'll be approved, Justin makes motion. Just a second.
Thank you, Tiffany. Justin?
Yes.
Jessica, yes, Matt?
Yes.
Shai?
Yes.
Next item on agenda is resolution two six dash two zero two four. Resolution authorized in the execution of a memorandum of understanding with the Arkansas Division of Emergency Management. So this is the uh, I don't know if you had, a while back, uh the P D asked to apply for a grant for generator, you guys gave it to go ahead to go ahead and do it, so this is a seventy-five twenty-five. Uh the this grant pays for seventy-five percent of the uh. Of grant, and we got to pay twenty-five percent of it, so with what the state has said, the total cost, and the state's going to do the whole bidding, they've already got the contractor and everything, so. The city, all the, all the city, that's just approve this and the state cap, so all that. But the total, if the total cost is ninety-two thousand dollars, that's our total cost of the grant, we'll have to pay twenty-three thousand of it. And we uh we looked today, talked to Blake, uh we believe as long as there's no catastrophic. Failure in the P D somewhere, then the money should be, will be in the P D's budget, otherwise, if something happens, we'll just have to amend the budget at the end of the year. We approve, Justin makes motion. Sounds like it.
Justin?
Yes.
Justin, yes, Matt?
Yes.
Shai?
Yes.
Excuse me, there's one section of that that's we need to add on to that memorandum of understanding.
Okay.
May I?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Apologize if I look a little rough, I've been outside on damaged site inspections all day, so my name is Susan Hardman, I have my coworker Randy Stump here. Uh and we're with E R Assist, we're a company based in Bentonville, uh that works with governmental entities um. Uh it to prepare for and recover from disasters, uh and we're the entity that uh. Submitted the request, the grant request to Department of Emergency Management. Uh um for this generator, Interpolice Department, so kind of the second part of that, so you had the memorandum with the Emergency Man- uh Management Agency. And the second part of that is whether or not the city wants to contract with E R Assist to 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 manage that grant and that whole process. Uh um purchasing and installing the grant and filing the monthly reports with the emergency management and then. Later on, collecting all of the paperwork to submit your request for reimbursement to the state. Um so that's kind of a little bit of a separate entity or or separate action from your memorandum of understanding. Uh whether or not you want to contract with E R Assist to handle all that. Uh and part of the grant that we turned in is a section for professional fees, so it'll still be, our our fee for grant management. Is still split seventy-five percent uh cost is covered by the state, twenty-five percent of that cost covered by uh the city.
So it's already built into the grant?
It's already built into the grant.
There won't be no more money besides the, you know, maximum twenty-four, the city's pocket.
Correct.
I don't, I mean. That's their job, so it makes it a lot easier on the city's side.
Which is why I look so tired all the time, because it's our job to manage your prices.
So we need, we need another approval for that.
I think we can just uh ask the uh. Council to acknowledge that our approvals want to include their management proposal.
Does that need to be written in, or?
No, you can just make a motion to to.
I'm I'm gonna. John makes a motion that the grant writers, their their administrative fee, but there'll also be.
Grant managers.
The the grant managers, administrative fee will be included in on this. One second. Matt, second.
Justin?
Yes.
Jessica, yes, Matt?
Yes.
Shai?
Yes.
All right, we'll get to work for you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Next item on the agenda is resolution two seven dash two zero two four. City of Hyphol, Arkansas, resolution authorized in the execution of a memorandum of understanding with the Northwest Arkansas Children's Shelter. So, um I've brought this up a few times in Beijing, the children's shelter reached out to uh the city. It's been eight, nine months ago, or a little longer, about providing police coverage at the children's shelter. And Blake's been in talks with them. So the children's shelter have a police officer up there, and they're going to pay the total cost of that police officer. Uh his uniforms, his everything. We just got to have him underneath the the hyphen police department, and Blake, are you online?
Yes, Mayor, I'm here, um council, this has been discussed for many years, this this position will provide. Services and security for a very important piece of our community, and I think that. I know me personally, since I've been the police chief, I've been really kind of positioning ourselves and posturing us to to try to take this on, and. Thankfully, the shelter has been able to work to get this uh financially funded for us, and then eventually, you know. I think the least we can do is is facilitate this, and uh it's it's a need, it's a it's a community need, and I think that. Us stepping up to the plate right now is important for that. Uh, school safety and facility safety is of the utmost concern, and uh. I think this has been something that the shelter has worked really hard to facilitate on their end, and. Um us being able to administrate that and make that happen is a is a big step in the right direction.
I think into the future, I mean, their their end goal is to have, I think, twenty-four hour coverage up there, but it's something that's going to be years.
Yes.
But the uh the shelter takes in every, you know, any kid in the state of Arkansas. Goes that that to that shelter, you know, with the with the criteria there. And our police department, they they respond up there with right now, and this will will allow, you know, on the on the hot hours of when police presence is needed. That our officer in patrol may not have respond up unless the officer there needs backup. You know, like I said, there is no cost really to the city for this position, so there's no adjustment in the budget or anything like that. Uh this will be completely cost by the children's shelter, so it's really a win-win for the city, and we get a. So it's really a win-win for the city. And we get a, uh, you know, I'm real big on. Every kid being protected, real big on, on uh, resource officers in every public school building there is. It's not, it's not a public school building, but it's still a school. It's in our city. So I'd recommend a, a, a good vote on this.
Same question for you. So it says here at five thousand dollars for professional equipment. Is that, that's probably uniforms and professional equipment. So there's no car or anything like that in this officer? They just?
The children's shelter is buying a car.
Okay, so that's a separate expense and that'll be within our fleet, but technically they pay for it. So we think that.
It's on the line, pays ten.
Pays ten. So okay. I didn't get to the car part, okay? Alright, so. And then from a budget perspective, we, we would, then we would do payroll for them and they pay us once a year, like the full amount where they owe us or?
It's uh, it's on the last page, I think, Justin. It's uh, they pay us once a quarter. And any overtime that's covered by that position will be paid.
Who approves the overtime for the shelter?
The shelter.
Shelter. Okay. And is it considered overtime if the officer works for the city separately?
If it's approved overtime such as, you know, outside their normal working hours at the shelter, maybe they work a DWI grant enforcement period. Or something of that nature, then we would be responsible for that because it wouldn't be something that is within the scope of the shelter coverage. But that's only at, in a, on an approved basis and that doesn't, that's not happen very often anyway, so.
Is this an incremental officer to our current staffing or do we, that we're similar workers staffing to take this role?
So this won't impact their rotation and whatnot?
Nope.
I'm sorry, repeat that?
It won't impact their rotations?
No. It, this person is solely responsible for what the shelter needs and facilitating. The, the things that need to be done up there. It doesn't, this, this won't affect any of our current coverage or staffing. As far as normal patrol or anything like that, if that's what you're asking.
Will we prove it? Justice, does any of council have anything else?
No, I'll second.
Just next motion, Jessica second.
Justin?
Yes.
Jessica? Yeah. Matt?
Yes.
Shy?
Yes. They've got the resolution for the ADQ.
So table uh, ADQ resolution.
Uh, the way I understood, the way that it's written out, and I conferred with Jeff. Who spoke with, with uh, the lady at ADQ. If it's discussed in a public forum and in the minutes, that would be accepted as a resolution or form of notifying council of, of said document. And as an approval. If the council takes action, this meeting to discuss it and approve it, that's sufficient for ADQ. That's what I tell them.
Yes.
Do we need to tie a resolution number to that?
Yeah.
This just come to us very end of the day. What this is, is. Uh, our server permit got sent to, the renewal process got sent to the previous administration. Did not get passed along to nobody and our server permit expired. And we found that out. Uh, we've been in the process of trying to smooth it over. And since we're hooking up to NACA, this is basically their way of saying, hey, you done that. This is five hundred dollar fine. We'll let you hook up, you know, basically. With, with that five hundred dollar fine, they can't take any further actions on our current wastewater treatment plant. We've been within permit for so long, we're just acting and using that under our old expired permit. They're still moving forward on the permit renewal process. That permit renewal process should be completed by, I would say, probably the end of November. But then Q one, Q two of twenty-five, we're gonna be connected to NACA so that the permit's not gonna be valid for very long. It's basically like Chris said, the state's way of saying, hey, we noticed that you didn't follow proper procedure. Here's a five hundred dollar fine. If we don't pay it, then they can take further actions against us, which could get costly.
And I just didn't pay the fine and not file it to state.
Basically, we just need a motion from you guys authorizing the mayor. Has informed you guys of the situation and he's able to pay the five hundred dollars.
It'll authorize the mayor to execute the consent administrative order and pay the five hundred dollars.
Can I just dig a little bit more on how we got here? You said it was sent to the previous administration and we weren't notified. Is there not a liability with previous administration to make sure this is taken care of for the city?
Oh, I guess.
Jay, can I ask you that question? Is there like a responsibility?
Can't answer for what the center, how the center, to whom, the plan or anything else. We just know it got sent to the email or email, so. But I mean, it's not five hundred dollars, the cost of larger fees and everything to go after. Go ahead, Ryan.
Yeah, uh, I was reading it. It said something about we could use. The funds or part of the funds to do a supplemental environmental project, possibly for the city. I was wondering if that had been thought about. Uh, that they would approve that. It looks like um. They'll decrease about certain amount, but it's one of the later paragraphs there. Have you all thought about that? So.
Where's that at, Ryan?
Uh, it's paragraph, it's on the first page. Well, there's two pages. The last paragraph, it says, in addition, you may have the option. Of directing a portion of your penalties toward a supplemental environmental project to advance environmental interest. So I don't know if we have anything in the city that environmentally, we want to put some money towards, so.
Well, the problem is that they're already, they're already under the agreement. They're already discounted or fined by, by fifty percent.
Yeah, so it only says thirty-five percent. Yeah, I got you.
Also, we might have a hundred dollars to designate towards some other administrative thing and. We can fiddle around and not pay it and then we have to pay a thousand dollars. Like I said, we got this and as you see, we got twenty calendar days to uh, respond back to this, so. We're not gonna have, we'll have to call another council meeting. That's gonna approve this, but. I'm gonna pay the fine.
Thanks, Justin. That's just next motion.
Second.
Justin?
Yes.
Jessica? Yes. Matt?
Yes.
Shy?
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Yeah, the next item on the agenda is department reports. Has any council got any questions? Department heads or anything?
Get my steps in. Hey, good evening, council. It's already been further discussed earlier in the meeting about water loss and what a big concern that is, especially in the dry months. Uh, we've been keeping an eye on our water loss. Our water loss for last month is right at eight, nineteen point eight three percent. We did locate and fix four leaks in the last month, which I think's accounts, accounts for at least half of that water loss. Uh, the water loss is going down and we're probably the lowest in, in Northwest Arkansas as of right now. Talking with other department heads. Uh, the infiltration, it's a dry month. Surely when we see more rain and start seeing more super infiltration, but uh, we'll take that one point six. Uh, as far as road department, the clutch on the dump truck went out. That was a costly fix. A timely fix because it was something that had to be done outside of our own shop. Uh, we do have the dump truck back. We did get some roads graded last month while the dump truck was down. So we did, really didn't work on any new projects per se last month. We just continued road grade and hit the spots that we know needed. Uh, the only other thing I got is I, I think one more time brush hogging, we may just be on top of it. Everything seems to be browned down, so we'll get that done here in the next couple of weeks. And you guys need anything or have any questions before we get?
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
I got something for the park committee. The uh, we're having the, the fall festival. Uh, on October twelfth, the. Park committee is having trouble finding donations because everything's. Just so tight these days. They, they have a DJ that's, is costing them a thousand dollars. For DJ. We have money in the parks budget to pay for that. Would the council be okay with paying for that? Well, it's, it's. I don't know if, I mean, I don't think so, but I just want to run it by you guys.
Yeah, I mean, if they happen, then they're both of them.
Usually they, usually they do it all donations, but like I said, the donations aren't coming, you know, like they normally do. That's pretty good. Yeah.
To save a thousand dollars. I know, I run on Spotify list to be done. That's just me.
But I'm not paying. I mean, I'm, I'm not running it, so. But like I said, they usually get donations. And it usually covers everything. They're just not, they're just not coming in this year like in the past. So if you guys are good with it, I'll just have a tip on it. And I'll, we'll just pay for the DJ out of that. Damn budget. I guess with the current spending budget.
Yeah.
Sounds good. That's all I got on for the bars, so.
Hey, just I think that, that committee uh, has not used their whole budget in the last couple of years, so if that makes you. You know, select some, buy some money, right?
A lot of that money is used, was used last year for the Christmas. Uh, some other used this year for Christmas. We're. We're uh, met with Tiffany, met with the uh, people that's, what's her name, Tiffany? That's got the.
It's the people that own um, the arch of the mansion.
They took an inventory of our likes that we bought last year. The council approved me to go buy right after Christmas and we're going to. Only thing we'll have the company do this year is do the Christmas tree and then we'll decorate everything else. Uh, through volunteers and stuff. So we'll buy some PVC pipe and some rebar to hold it in there and stuff like that, so. Uh, but hopefully we get a, a system set up and all we gotta do is set it up here in the future and just add to it, so. And the brewery is paying for the first hundred hot dogs will be. Sold up there. So the first hundred hot dogs will be free. The brewery is paying, is sponsoring that. For downtown dogs. So that'll be, the, so it's gonna be hot dogs, cocoa, coffee. Are you bringing some pie to the, to the Christmas line? Oh, Christmas? No.
That was something to fall this.
Yeah, I heard there's some good like that. Anybody have anything else on department reports? Financial reports, month of August two thousand twenty-four. Counsel, got any questions, concerns? Questions, concerns, I just stand in motion. Doesn't make some motion.
Justin?
Yes.
Jessica? Yeah. Matt?
Yes.
Shy?
Yes. Uh, community events coming up. Farmer's market, so every Saturday at City Park, eight AM to noon. Fall tree giveaway is gonna be Tuesday, October fourteenth, seven AM until gone. The reason that is, is the tree company. Uh, told us this is why we're delivering the trees. If you want it different day, it's a cost that you gotta pay, so. Uh, so we're, we're doing it on Tuesday. And that's October fourteenth from seven AM until they're gone. Fall festival starts Saturday, October twenty, or October twelfth. From ten AM to one PM. Uh, Christmas in the Park is Friday, December sixth at five thirty. Did I say something wrong?
Well, it's Saturday, October twelfth. Monday would be the thirteen. Monday would be the fourteen. One of those dates is wrong.
Tuesday the fifteenth, that's what this.
Tree giveaway is the fifteenth, not the.
Yeah, Tues- Tuesday, the fifteenth. Thanks, Justin. Already got, the mayor's report. The council got anything? Discussion?
I had a couple of questions. Can you just remind me where we stand with um, what we're seeking for a grant for that park in Silver Meadows?
We uh, we, Jeremy was, is the POA president up there. Rogers and he would never would call us back, so we never could get his authorization to use that area again.
Okay.
So Cassie called and called and called, went up and tried to catch him at his house. Uh, we tried calling. Had Dennis, uh, Dennis one call. Well, it started past now.
Okay.
Had to wait for next year then.
Okay.
So he would never call us back with that multiple messages.
That's frustrating. Okay. And then did we ever discuss if it's important or not to adjust? The difference of the speed limits between Woodward Hills and Silver Meadow? So I believe Silver Meadow is at twenty-five miles an hour and Woodward Hills is at twenty.
Thought there was something past, wasn't it? Or was it just?
I think I just brought it up once. I don't know if there's no.
There's a change, but that was just on one road.
Yeah, that wasn't, that was not for the neighborhoods, like residentially.
Which that's, that's impressive. So are you, uh, yeah, what I mean, what do you want to do, Jessica?
Um, I mean, I don't. I don't really have sway one way or the other. Like, we need to bring down Silver Meadows to twenty. I mean, shy. Your input. I mean, we're at twenty miles an hour. We get people driving past buses anyway right now, so.
Yeah, I thought we talked about this, same thing. What, what do we need to do to bring that?
Bring it down?
Just bring Silver Meadows down to twenty miles an hour.
Make a motion to have all, all the streets of Silver Meadows be lowered to twenty.
Well, and, and, and as we done by ordinance. So we'd have to bring back an ordinance.
If that's, if that's what you want, then we'll have to bring that back.
I guess if, if they're blowing past buses even twenty miles an hour, I think the problem not the speed limit, I think.
That needs to be addressed on an individual basis out there, out there seen, but.
Definitely get some info from the safety committee and the police, the police department as to what's going on. I, I don't, I haven't heard anything, so I don't know one way or the other.
Is uh, is the school reporting that stuff? Because everything's video now on the buses. They can get license plate numbers and everything. I have not gotten anything.
I haven't heard anything about.
I know this has been brought up, we've brought this up before.
It usually goes directly to the prosecutor, from the police to the prosecutor. Typically happens is the bus driver is required to make a report of it to the school. They upload their video, the other information when they get back to school. School turn it over to the police department. Police department sends us to the prosecutor.
I know Jack was saying it a couple meetings ago, was make sure the bus driver is reporting that to the school board because everything is video. And they, they can get the whole description, license plates of the vehicle and everything.
Okay.
So uh, and that, I mean, it's all on video, so it gets them running, so they're good, they're busted. But the school bus driver has to report that to the bus.
So we know how to address that.
So do we need to write ordinance? Like, do I need to write for, because we're Silver Meadows or what?
No, if you, if you guys, if you want to lower that, and that's what's majority of you.
Having your input is, do you see a benefit one way or the other? Either raising Woodward Hills to twenty-five miles an hour or lowering Silver Meadows to twenty miles an hour? So they're both consistent.
I, I think we should lower it to twenty miles an hour. I mean, we got kids who've been playing in the streets all the time.
Yeah, we have a lot of kids in our neighborhood as well.
We'll just have to draw that ordinance out. Everything in Silver Meadows needs to be lowered to twenty mile an hour.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll leave my house a minute earlier. Is that uh, is that something we should uh? For future developments, should we just implement twenty miles per hour for future developments?
That's what she has to do.
I think we should just do that. Yep, do a, do a blanket. So any further developments or any further development, or subdivision should just close miles per hour.
I have nothing else.
Oh, you're fine. It's what your guys' job is. So if you guys got anything, be sure to bring it up, so. Bye, I'll sign that.
Oh, we talked about something there.
Yes, so.
We have one on.
My bad. Let her remember, so. We, Justin, Wayne, Jeremy, myself, met with. We're trying to, as you know, we're trying to redesign the city. And Justin stepped in anytime, Wayne stepped in, Jeremy, you too, trying to redesign the city, so. We, we tried it on a, we tried to put together a, a group of people. Plan, well, and that group of people was, is wonderful. But none of us have the experience to plan a city and to where to start at, how, how to do it and put it all together in pieces. And so we reached out for some, uh, scientist, what's it?
Well, with, there, there are some engineering firms that offer professional planners, uh, here in northwest Arkansas. Uh, so we, we reached out, uh, to some engineering firm and asked for statements of qualification. So the Arkansas. Procedure for selecting an engineer or an engineering professional, an engineering firm is. To request statements of qualification. The, the city is then required to consider the expertise and competence of the firm with respect to the services that we need. The capability of the firm to perform the working question. Uh, past performance of the firm and similar projects. And finally, the firm's proximity to unfamiliarity of which the project is located. So the mayor's gonna tell you about the, the, uh, statements of qualification the city received. The mayor and city staff went down, sat down together and went through this evaluation process. The mayor has a recommendation for the selection.
So my recommendation is, uh, you know, Garber Engineering. They, uh, you know, they got offices that's close to us, you know, favorite Rogers. And they, they plan smaller cities our size and also bigger cities, all in northwest Arkansas. I know they've worked at Plottown, they worked at Centertown, worked at, you know, K Springs, uh, Midville, uh, Ro- not Rogers.
Elm Springs.
Elm Springs, Springdale, so they've worked with a lot and they're. And what, what our recommendation is to you guys is. Anything else I need to?
Well, assuming the council approves that recommendation, uh, well, that would be number one and then whoever the other firm is would be number two. You know, it was Crafton, go home. So what happens is, what, once the council approves the recommendation, the mayor meets with Garber. Talks about scope of the project and gives a proposed, uh. Basically a, a project proposal from Garber. And if, and if the mayor is satisfied with that, he'll bring that back to the council for approval as to the dollar amounts. So there's no discussion of price, right? Anything else right now? Right now, the decision is, let's go with Garber number one and Crafton Toll number two, for example, if that's what the council decides.
It just is being part of a subcommittee that's been out there for a while. We've had, we, we had a whole team of like six of us or seven of us, meaning. And like, like the mayor said, we're not professionals in playing the city. We all have ideas and dreams to go build the type it'll look like one day and we can put some of that, that will go into this process. But having an engineer that that's what they were trained to do will be the benefit of the city long term.
We all got this, the same goal, and that's to make the, the city very beautiful and very attractive to everybody that wants to move in. And to redeem our citizens, where when they buy, you know, a starter home, then they can move up to a bigger home. But they stay, they, they want to live here, they want to be here because we played it really good and it's a really beautiful city to be here and.
That's what you just made right there is why the biggest argument that I have about with the engineers, to build a city that our children can live in and start out their families in, but then, then stay here their entire lives. And I will not have to move out, the way housing prices are going, we all know, like, we might be able to get here. The city we're building today is more probably not your starter homes. And so how do you build a starter home community as well as a, you know, retirement home community as well, or when you cradle the grave, if you will. So it's exciting to start thinking that way and think about how, how do you do it, doing it a way that we're all pleased with in the end, so, pretty exciting.
I was, yeah, when the city went through this, uh, two thousand, we think of versatile Arkansas, just the experience of being involved in it. Back then was, it was just awesome. It's just so neat to see it, you know, from start to finish. Uh, you guys will enjoy the same thing, uh, all the citizens will as well, because we're, I mean, this isn't like. This whole process isn't gonna happen overnight. This is gonna be a year process, you know, we're having multiple, uh. Public meetings and stuff, start small, then just build from there. You know, and it'll make, not only the planning commission's job, but the council's job easier on proven development. Because when something comes in, we can look at our land use map and say, this fits it or this don't fit. And you guys can decide then, yes or no.
Brian Clark has come in.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Sorry, hey, sorry, I was getting my mic off mute. Um, you know, I was, I was on the committee that you are talking about, uh, and. You know, my, my only concern of outside kind of people coming in and planning our city is that. Do they have a different vision of our city than the citizens have of our city? And I believe that the citizens. You know, are the ones who, I mean, we live here and that sort of thing, so I just don't want kind of a takeover of, well, let's just. Develop Heifel into what northwest Arkansas wants Heifel to be, and I don't know if we have any process of still having some sort of. Citizen committee that meets with these engineering firms or something so that we have that input involved or, or how that would work and what your plan is, so. Just my two cents serving on it and also my desires of living here for a long, long time, so.
I know when I went through it in two thousand, the University of Arkansas, they come out, met, we had multiple public meetings and. They made the city what the citizens thought it was, would be then, now, you know, so. Uh, I think they're going to implement some of their ideals as well as what we want as a city.
You know, so.
Still we are, still we are direct.
Yes, well, I mean.
We start out with a framework for what we think the city should, we want the city to look like, we as the citizens, they hear all that and they say, uh, here's how you get there.
Here's, here's, here's how you make it work in this big design.
Right. Okay.
They never posed questions to us like they did that day, where they said, is this in the community where the people can have starter homes as well as their final homes? And we have to answer to citizens, do we want to be just a community that's selling here for the two million dollar homes only? And we don't want to have homes for our young children to, to live in? We can.
Yeah, but, I mean, that was just one of, I mean, many questions that, that ask us, do you want a downtown area? That's what often citizens do, okay? You need to figure out where you want that downtown area, we'll implement it. You know, do you want schools here? Well, yeah, okay, you need to figure out where you want that, look at the day. So they're, they're gonna answer the que- they're gonna ask us the questions of what we want. And then when we tell them what we want, they're gonna implement it in to where. And they said, where the drainage, you know, they, they said the big key thing, you know, in houses is where all this water goes when it, when it floods. Well, that's one of the places, you know, you don't want high density subdivisions around that. You want more of your estate style lots, you know, you don't want stuff in the floodplain, you know, so. I think what a, a lot of what we, we are thinking, they're, they're there plus more.
But the public to, to Ryan's point, I believe, the public meetings that they should be able to hold. Would allow for input from the citizens and what they're wanting, okay.
And there'll be more than one of those meetings. It sounds like we're just going by three to four meetings at least or something like that. But.
Specifically Garber was talking three or four meetings or both of the companies that you're looking at, that's stated.
Well, no, it's like what Justin and I, like, we're gonna have, like, we're not gonna have anything approved, that's just one meeting, it's done. You know, like, it's gonna be multiple, multiple meetings. I want all the citizens in, so is Justin, I think the rest of the council does too. You know, so we're not gonna approve anything that's just got one public meeting, because you, you might have one public meeting and only two people show.
Right.
You know, you gotta have multiple, so that way you can try to get everybody's schedule lined up to be able to make it to the.
Right.
You know, so, uh, this isn't just gonna be one meeting, like, I want to have a lot of.
Input, right, okay.
I don't got anything else, uh, well, that's approved, yeah, I need a motion to approve it, Garber.
I, yeah, I trust you, God, man, I'll, I'll second.
Justin makes a motion.
Or number one, Crafton, all number two.
Matt, I'll shoot him five seconds. Matt?
Yes.
Shy?
Yes.
Yeah, that was nice.
Honey, I just need to, a motion to adjourn. I'm gonna be adjourned. I'll second. Justin makes a motion.
Justin?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yeah.
Matt?
Yes.
Shy?
Yes.
Thanks, council.
Thank you.